So, this is an update of the budget presentation I did last month because tonight we are voting on our preliminary budget to go to the county office of education. I stress this is preliminary although I suspect with Oakland not too much is going to change, but the state is required to review and approve your budget before I can advertise it and before we can have our public hearing in April. Our vision and mission statement, I'm not going to go through all these, and this is basically what we've been doing basically all year with our staff leading up to budget, and how we review our budget. We always review our budget in line with putting kids first and keeping as much of our money in the classroom as possible. And every time we do our goals, we go back to obviously your school, your board goals, and how do our decisions with regards to curriculum instruction, everything impact student achievement? And every budget decision has to be based on how's it going to impact student achievement? And like I've said previously, we literally have left no stone unturned, especially in Oakland, we literally have reviewed every single item in this budget. Budget calendar that I presented previously, and again, this is my one plus one plus two, one plus one equals two. Obviously, our revenues have to equal our expenses, and as I've said previously, in the last few years, our expenses have been growing, and this is every school district around us, the expenses are growing astronomically. So what do we know? I'm going to update you. Obviously, by law, you're allowed a 2% tax increase. We did generate a healthcare adjustment, so now Oakland's tax increase will be 3.4%. That's what I used to balance the budget this year. Overall, there's a reduction in revenues in this budget of $159,596, and that's because we had a lower fund balance on bringing in a less amount of maintenance reserve. The good news is, it's not as bad as it could have been because Collingswood's actually refunding Oakland $162,000 for tuition, so our loss of revenues with the $162,000 from Collingswood actually could have been closer to $300,000. That would end up reducing the budget. Overall, Oakland lost $41,000 in state aid, although net, it doesn't look that bad, but we are one of the districts that they're going to start taking state aid away from because we are below our local fair share. So if anybody who's been following the news with Collingswood, everybody's abundantly aware of what that means, what local fair share is, and how it impacts, I'm sorry, our state aid formula. This is just a revision of our revenues I've shown you previously. And this is our tax impact, with the 3.4% tax increase, it's about $106 on the average assessment, so the tax calculation is attached here and is attached on your agenda, and we can make this presentation available to the public. But I do want to talk about the last couple of slides because things might, I'm going to do what might change. So what don't we know? Any additional addition replacements, any additional homeless placements? And there is pending legislation, which I've heard whisper down the lane, but the mayor of Collingswood has heard the same thing through his group. There's pending legislation that came out of all of the hearings that the department that had, remember, they came down and everybody was April speak. So they're looking for a way to address those districts that are below their local fair share and below adequacy, because when Trenton does their funding formula, they, when they look at our local fair share, they make the assumption in the formula, we have the ability to get the local fair share. But as you know, I've already said, well, that's not very smart, because then they cap our ability to access the local fair share, they cap it at 2%, so we can never access it. So they're looking to revise that law a little bit to give those districts that are upside down access to that local fair share amount, or to give you some grace to move the 2% by some marker, we don't know what that is. If that happens in the next week or two, we could opt to revise Oakland's budget and restore the $100,000-plus supply line items that I took out of Ms. Bolden's budget, which I would probably recommend, because you want to increase your base as much as possible, because we don't know how long this grace period will be. So I'm hoping this legislation passes, but again, just if it does, that's going to be my recommendation, is that we open the budget gap and we try to take advantage of that so that we can recoup some of what we've lost over the last couple of years. Oakland is below your local fair share by $625,686. So what that means is when Trenton looks at Oakland Borough School District, that basically Trenton is saying that the town of Oakland can afford to pay $625,000 more to the operation of the school districts, and they're going to start taking state aid away as a result. But again, when you cap it at 2%, I can never get there. Mathematically, it's not possible, so that's why there's that, there is that push now to allow us to go that a little bit, because what happens is our expenses are going up astronomically, and if I can't access that, we're going to be in a constant cut pattern, and you can only cut so much without affecting children, which we don't ever want to do. Any questions on that before I, yeah?
Yeah, so it says here that Oakland is below adequacy by the same amount.
Yes.
So we add those, we double that number?
No.
No, that one.
It's just, like in Collingswood, and it's a confusing formula, but the first local fair share is what Trenton calculates when they determine your state aid. The second adequacy is what's determined in your budget software, so what Trenton, again, they use the state aid formula to an extent, but they look at your tax levies in the past, and they determine what your adequacy budget should be, okay? And then they look at your, what they think it should be versus what you have budgeted, and the difference is you're either over adequate, meaning you're spending above what the state thinks you should be spending, or you're spending below. You guys are so, you're tiny, and we've always spent like, like, I know where every dollar is, and because we've always been right there, I mean, there have been years where you've been over adequate, but, and I think that has a lot to do with why we got the $600,000 and then we took it away, because, you know, I think we're right where, I think you guys are perfect example, you're right where you should be, like, they're saying you're $625,000 below local fair share and you're under adequate. I think it's like you guys are the perfect examples to show that Trenton says you're fully funded, but they also agree that the town should be paying more. Collingswood, they're under adequate by about six and a half million, and then their local fair share is, they're below about eight and a half million. So about a $2 million swing in Collingswood, which I haven't figured out where that came from yet, but you guys are right on the money. But yeah, so basically Trenton is saying that they think you should be spending that more in our budget, which I would agree with, but they think it should come from local, which is why they're starting to take it away from state aid in a nutshell.
Can you explain that the, that 1.4% difference for the healthcare adjustment going from 2% to 3.4%? Like, how's that work?
So healthcare adjustment is one of the few exceptions in the software where I can increase the tax levy above 2% for certain costs that are outrageous, or if you have a spike in enrollment, which we haven't had a spike in enrollment. So right now, we're seeing prescription renewals coming in at 20% and higher. So when I budgeted your, obviously, your health benefits for your staff, it generated an automatic healthcare adjustment, so they automatically tack it on to your tax levy to pay for the increased cost. I wish they did that with special ed and special ed busing, but they didn't hear that comment. I mean, I made that comment all over the state, but the only one they gave us is healthcare. So once we, once I entered everything into the state budget software, it automatically kicked out like $88,000 for Oakland for healthcare, and automatic.
Beth, then if I, if I can, you may not notice off the top of your head.
That's right.
But the, the healthcare one went up, the cost went up.
Oh, yeah.
So we can increase our budget to cover that increase?
Yeah, you can increase your tax levy revenue to pay for the increased cost in healthcare.
Okay, and the 1.4% additional over to 2% equals what the healthcare went up?
It's, well, it's, it's
Which applies to the whole?
It's the adjustment they give you. So what they do is I enter everything, I enter what your general is, I enter what your prescription is, enter what your healthcare is, they do the same, they already have preloaded into the software what the state health benefit plan is running at. And then the software, the software automatically calculates an adjustment for us based on the number of employees I put in the budget and the actual costs I've input. I wouldn't say it's dollar for dollar, it's definitely not dollar for dollar, but that's what I think.
No, yeah, I was thinking 1.4% of the total tax levy is going to be more than the increase.
Oh, yeah. And again, I was glad we got that, because that really helped us this year. I mean, we're paying more, obviously, in RX, but we really needed the boost this year. Any other questions? I will say, like I've said before, the budget is balanced, it is lean. We haven't added anything, the only thing we've added, we're adding a preschool class. So we will be expanding our preschool program in Oakland, yay, we're getting 15 more babies. So we will be adding a teacher, but that is the only thing that is new, and everything else is status quo, and should they pass that legislation, they were, we were supposed to find out last week and we didn't, so I don't know, maybe this week. I will say, we're going to approve the budget to go to county office for review and approval. That's just me and Fred and you as the board of education doing your statutory authority. By law, we have to do it by March 19th. You can change the budget up to the public hearing, which is what I'm saying, if they, the lawmakers do make that available to us, I will email everybody, maybe we'll have a special meeting, and you guys can make the decision what you want to do, and if we want to change it, we do it before the April 29th meeting. Leave us today. Any other questions for the budget? Any? All right, that's it for me.
All right, moving on to committee of the whole, and we have a motion. It's a move. Moved and seconded. Couple, couple quick items for committee of the whole, just some general updates from our committee meetings this past month. As I mentioned, last month, we have a committee of staff administrators working on the calendar for 2025-26. One change of note on the calendar proposal is that we're looking to have 180 days as opposed to 181, which we typically have. What that means is any snow days that we would have during the school year would just be added on to the end of the year, which is a deviation from the past, rationale being that the 181 days would have everybody coming back to school on a Monday, and so I think everybody who's on the team is looking to avoid that if possible. As Mrs. Coleman mentioned, we were approved for a fifth pre-K general education classroom for the school year, for the upcoming school year. That is part of the early childhood grant that we participated in, so not an impact to our tax levy or our budget, and that's exciting, so congratulations on that. I think at this point, we'll be at 100% of our universe, yeah. All right, so just some general updates there. First thing we have on our agenda for committee of the whole is this policy 5111 that we've been going round and round with.
And round and round.
And round and round. Aiden, I'll just call you out.
I know.
Because you're like a top dog on that one, yeah, so lay it on us.
Yeah, there was an issue with the non-teaching staff, but I think Beth, you clarified.
Yeah, I think you just said non-certificated.
Yeah, I think, I think that works, because, yeah, that was an issue.
That was, that was the one on page seven?
I do not have it up. I think it was page seven, because there was only an A and B when there should have been a C, because, maybe on the original.
Page seven, option C.
The one that's attached to the document.
Children's non-resident.
Exactly. It is a confusing policy. It's page four on the, that's attached to the document.
It's five of five.
Five of five.
Jen said it's on five of five.
Which one? What are we talking about? Non-resident teaching staff or non-resident non-teaching?
Non-resident.
Non-resident, non-teaching is this. Then you should say non-certificated. Okay.
This one would be up for vote next month, is that?
Yes.
Can I ask, can I ask a question on this? The, the teaching staff can, can bring their kids in and well educate them as long as we have room, which we always do, but when they go to sixth grade, do we pay tuition for them? They're on their own at that point.
Unless they want to try to choice in?
Yeah.
They can make a choice application? Good question.
Is that addressed in that 600 pages of this policy?
No. We just know, like, we look for like, the, one where I look at like, how many people are moving over, I look at the eighth grade, but like residents.
But, and I don't think it should be, because we're looking at pre-K to five, our policy is our policy. I don't think it should be part of this policy, because this policy covers the students in this building.
What happens, it covers the students in this building, it covers the Oakland students.
In the building.
In the building.
In the pre-K to five building.
Well, just like the rest of our policies.
I hear what you're saying, but I'm not sure all the policies I've been looking at address that, because a lot of them talk about things that don't apply to Oakland.
Well, I'm going to challenge that, because we've, that's come up in a couple of conversations, like, oh, you know, I think in committee, we were looking at one for plagiarism, and that was a question among our committee, and Ms. Bolden agreed, oh, yeah, three to fifth grade, yes, that has to be something we need to address. So I, you know, I, I think we typically ask that in committee, is this relevant?
And some is, some is like for kids, like, obviously here, but some are resident, like, because again, you have Oakland residents attending Collingswood Middle School and Collingswood High School, and maybe they're choicing to another district, so like, some of your policies have to do with resident children and the tuition, like, all those policies have to do with resident, so I guess it's policy dependent, I think.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, if, if there's a teaching staff member someday that comes back and says, well, you've said that you'll provide the education for my kids on a policy number 5111, my kid now is going to Collingswood, so I expect you'll pay the tuition.
So pre-K to five school.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but the policies don't address that, and those kids in Collingswood are our students.
Your resident students, so like the, the
Yes.
Teaching staff members, they're not residents, so, because I think your tuition policy talks, I think the term resident is in there.
Right.
Might have to pull that up, but I'm pretty sure it says resident pupil, you pay for resident pupils.
It distinguishes between resident.
The board would have to put, yeah, the board would put it just for Oakland schools, except for Collingswood. Nobody would put it for Collingswood.
Now, I, I hear what you're saying, and I don't disagree with you, but I don't think you have anything to hang your hat on if you get a, a teacher or a smart lawyer somewhere that says, no, 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 Collingswood or Oakland's going to pay for that tuition, which I agree, I don't think we should, I have no problem with that.
So here's, here's, the provision is
The provision isn't going to, isn't going to fly.
I said the provision in the board policy in Collingswood is for Collingswood staff members, and so the Collingswood board would need to approve any child that is a non-resident student that is not a child of a staff member, and, and they don't approve non-resident students by their policy. And so the agreement that they have with Oakland would be for Oakland resident students, and so I, I understand what you're, what you're saying, and so Oakland is making a carve-out exception only for staff members in this building, but those same staff members aren't in the Collingswood buildings, which means that that, that provision would sever once they leave the, this particular building.
But that carve-out doesn't say in this building. That's, that's my point, that it's, I think, a gray area. Suppose this student lives in Haddon Township, and they goes through Oakland up to grade five, now they're going to go to grade six, and they decide they're going to go to Haddon Township High School, and they, the smart lawyer comes back and says, you know, geez, you know, you guys have this policy 5111 that says you'll pay for the, or you'll provide a free education for those, those kids of the teaching staff member. What, what do we have that we can hang our hat on and says, no, 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 just what you're saying, I'm, I agree with what you're saying, I'm just concerned that it's not clear.
As long as it says staff member, that's the key, right? I mean, that staff member is not a staff member at Collingswood or Haddon Township, so, right, as long as that language is in there, I would assume, right? Are they teaching member, staff member, that, that designates it to this building and this building only?
No, no, it, I
I mean, that's how I
Or maybe how you interpret it, that's not, not going to be the problem.
I can read it, do you want me to read it?
If I could, if I could, okay. If, what it says on the bottom of page four is a teaching staff member who does not reside in this school district will be permitted to enroll their children in the educational program of the school district without payment of tuition if the child's educational program can be provided, if the child's, yeah, can be provided in a school in the district.
In the school.
In the district.
And we only have one district.
This is, there's only, that's only this district.
So that's another reason.
Yeah, so that's the end of page four, beginning of page five, so I think that covers that.
And that's what I was going to say, like, Oakland Public School District, we're, our school district is a pre-K to five district and stop. We're not a six to eight, nine to 12, we
I counted at least five times throughout the body of the document that stresses in this district, in the dis, like, it's pretty, it, it says it throughout, and it's, Oakland is the district in this case.
I'm just coming up to speed, because I was absent last, last month.
You're missing.
Oh, I heard about that, yeah, I was, I was. My, my only question on this is the first paragraph, when it says under the, under 20 years of age, but we're K through five district, like, what is that?
Because NJSA, that policy covers
Oh, so it's just like basically quoting that, right?
I think what it's saying is because NJSA, 18A, 30 through one, covers those ages, then it would cover those ages pursuant to that policy, pursuant.
That's fair.
Yeah, those are the ages we have to educate, unless they're special ed, then it goes to 21. That's the statute.
We can do kindergarten call.
If, the ages are over five, under 20 in that law.
For a first read tonight, is that officially on the agenda, so we'll move forward that, yeah?
It is. Yeah, 12.05, yeah, it is.
Only other item we had on the agenda for committee of the whole was just to revisit our board goals for this year, is attached in board docs, and we share it via email. During our retreat, we had talked about kind of splitting it up amongst the various areas, so community, or amongst the various committees, so community relationships and engagement goal, curriculum and instruction goal, and the finance goal, so any thoughts on that?
I like it. I think it would be helpful for, under the community relationships and engagement goals, to appoint people, so we talked about board representation at Borough meetings, or if it makes sense, I'm not necessarily volunteering myself, but I am the chair of that committee, so, but if anybody would like to have that role.
Do there any needs conflict with us? Wasn't there discussion?
Uh, no, they don't, timing wise, they don't, yeah.
The Borough meeting conflicts with our committee meetings.
I thought it was Mondays.
I thought it conflicted with what happened. But doesn't it start at seven?
Yeah, the board, or the Borough's committee meetings are Monday, but their board meeting is Tuesday.
Oh, oh, the caucus is Monday.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, 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 sorry. We'll tell them to change it.
The council, which one are we talking about?
It's the town hall side, like the, yeah, the, under community relationships, town hall.
The reason being, we, yeah, we talked about it, because Chuck Lehman, rest in peace, was fantastic as a liaison from the Borough, from Town Council, and came to all of our meetings, and it was a helpful relationship that we thought could be good to forge ahead.
And with the things that are going on in Collingswood, it would be good to have, you know, hands at those meetings as well?
Of the flow.
Yeah, exactly, right.
That meeting's happening right now.
Is it at six o'clock? It's at seven.
It's at seven.
If we hurry up.
How about if I reach out to Town Council with this as a proposal and see, I don't think they can change their meetings for this year, but maybe there can be some kind of more formalized communication between our two groups.
Yeah.
Now, one of the things
And then we meet separately.
One of the things that's kind of come up here and there, as we've kind of discussed our committee structure and different things, is the possibility of having, you know, community members sit on or attend a committee, so, you know, that might be a way to go, see if we can get somebody from the council to attend the, you know, community policy committee.
I must have changed it, because he was always
I just, I just looked, and I don't think, I think this is the only one that falls in our meeting, I think the future meetings don't, don't fall, so I think it's just for this.
So maybe they're doing their budget too, maybe?
So I'd encourage anyone who would like to volunteer for that role.
Would anyone like to be voluntold?
Yeah, give it, give it some thought, we don't need to decide tonight, and I think, you know, when Jimmy does his report on, on Collingswood, and the latest and greatest from there, might help inform our decisions a lot, like you said. All right, any, any other thoughts on board goals?
I have a question about the town, the town hall meetings, are we going to do that quarterly? I know we talked about, I know Collingswood said they were doing it monthly, ended up being like 10, eight or 10 meetings, yeah, so how did we want to split that up? What is the structure of the town, I know what a town hall is, but like, what is the, what are we encouraging those in the town to do in this town hall?
I can talk to Collingswood a little bit. Not all board members go, because then I would have to advertise, so they take turns, and like, maybe two, two board members, sometimes maybe three, and there's a topic, so they put the topic out to the community, I think they do like a Google sign up, because space is limited in Collingswood, so I think they try to keep it to a certain number of people. So they put the topic, the topic out, and then it's more a bunch of people in town getting together to discuss a certain topic. Sometimes they get information from members of the community about things that they didn't know about, or like ideas for things, but you would throw like a topic out there, so like, I don't want to say budget, that's just how it's, I have budget brain right now, but you can go, ah, the state cut our budget again, like, let's talk about it, and like, you advertise it, everybody comes in, we do our best to explain what's going on, that kind of thing, and it gives you like an open, you know, without, without it being a form of board meeting, it's more like a back and forth, which is sometimes that's what the community wants, they want the back and forth, but they don't realize this is a business meeting where they can come and they can make a comment, but we're really not doing the back and forth. It gives you opportunity to do the back and forth.
No, that's, I, I, that's exactly where I was getting at, I just didn't, I wanted to understand how it was different than encouraging them to come tonight, okay.
Yeah, we heard a little bit more about it at the board Yeah, we heard a little bit more about it at the board retreat when we had our joint session with Collingswood. That was one of their information, yeah.
Yeah, it's very topic-based, where they, you know, it started with the referendum, and it just kind of morphed into everything.
Is it reasonable to say we would try to get one in between now and the end of the year, right? And just see?
You can find a topic.
I know we talked about perhaps doing it based on committee topic. So if we do four, I mean, or three in the first year?
And then if the topic's relevant to that committee, those committee members would be the ones to represent that.
Right, right.
Makes sense.
So can you put it on the agenda for April School Public Community Relations and Policy Committee?
But you want to set a date, or do I want to put on? Set a date.
Maybe we can ask board members to submit ideas for topics between now and the next committee meetings.
I'd submit one now for the, just to talk about the funding formula and everything that's going on with that. You know, might be a good opportunity, coming right out of budget season, to do that, which leads to our Finance Goal, right, which is the SFRA piece. So, you know, we could kind of kill two birds with one stone there, but...
Did everybody sign up? I know Aiden did. I'm gonna give you all the stinky eye. Good job, Aiden.
All right. Anything else for Committee of the Whole?
I have something.
Yeah.
And this is, you guys might throw things at me. I don't know how this is gonna come out. It might be a big bomb, but I would like to open up a discussion, not right now, but for all committees and us in general, to see what maybe regionalization would look like with Collingswood, which is, I mean, again, big word.
Can you elaborate on it?
So, basically like us being absorbed into their district. So we wouldn't be a separate district again. I know it's a very big conversation, but I think, you know, we struggle with shared services, money back and forth. It would, it would make things a lot easier and make things a lot, I mean, it would just make things flow a little bit better. I know this is a thing that has not been, has never happened, right? Like, that's, that's something, and I think that's also what the state's really pushing for on these funding. And they, I mean, they've literally said it, and that's what they want. Not that we should bend over and allow the state to tell us what, you know, everything we have to do, but just to see what that conversation would look like. I've just, I thought of it organically over the last couple of weeks. So there's a lot of things that would be involved, like the voting process, right? Like, we would still have to have a member on the board. I would like to see Oakland have a member or two members on the board. If Woodland did the same thing, they would have to have a member on the board, how would we be voted in, right? Because now it's a Collingswood voting situation, how would we be able to get voted into that process? So it's just something, you know, it's a big, it's a big conversation that, you know, we don't have to have right now, by no means, but...
And if you really wanna, like, there's a lot to unpack.
Yeah, a lot.
That's, that's the understanding, because I'm just thinking of all kinds of laws and, but then if you want to, in the future, I can see if school boards has a presentation on it, so they can answer like a lot of the questions. I don't know if this is like a, what do they call it, like a canned presentation, but it's like, this is a, there's a lot of laws in play with this, but I want to feel like somebody should be able to answer the questions. So if you wanted to like invite them in at a later time to have a presentation to discuss it, that might be an option, because like, I'm, right now, I'm thinking of like six different laws that are applying in my brain.
There is a formal playbook. There's a formal playbook with the state, because what we, we don't want the boards, and by the way, the Collingswood Board is in line with asking the same question you're asking. But we need, we need to know what's the structure and all the variables that need to be considered to even complete the question.
Because I know there's a vote, there has to be a vote.
And I think it's, I don't know if it's a simple majority vote, or like a majority of majority, you know, sometimes you can pass by one vote and it passed, like, yeah, there's all kinds of questions with that.
One question, two would be, are the kids better off being in Collingswood?
Well, they would still be here.
Yeah, they should be here, but they, we'd have no control over anything that went on.
We would, well, that's why I say we would still have a member or two on the board. Currently, right, we...
We have a member on their board now.
Right.
And one vote, you're one of eleven.
But we're getting most of our services from Collingswood. I mean, so I feel like it's already done, but...
So, I mean, I don't wanna, I wanna encourage Jimmy that I think that took a lot of...
Guts.
Guts to bring this. And it's, I don't think, these are conversations that have not been thought about or spoken about out loud by probably everyone on this table and in this room. There's, I'm just gonna point to a resource that I read in the NJSPA magazine, and it's online, Lessons from Regionalization from the Henry Hudson District. As, if I, I can't read and talk at the same time, but there are funds available for feasibility studies, I believe.
Yes, we, we pressed a law for that.
I'll send it to, you know, every, I'll send it to the board to read the article, because I read it in print, and it was a few months ago, but it was from an October issue. So I just, I think that's some, I'm just sharing a resource, not an opinion.
Jimmy, I know it's an out-of-the-box suggestion, and then you're like, you get all these weird looks from all of us, so again, I guess I echo the commending you on bringing it up. Knee-jerk reaction, without even discussing the, everybody's saying, oh, a lot of things are running through my mind. My knee-jerk reaction's like, no, like, you know? And I think for me, it rides on, yes, we'd have a member or two. And I'm sure Collingswood would, the good people of their board always want to do what's best for children, but right now, I like that we have nine people who can represent what's best for Oakland in this setup, as opposed to having one or two, however many that setup would look like, really just focused on the best interest of Oakland. I don't think anybody on the Collingswood School Board is like, how can we stick it to Oakland? I'm not saying the contrary would happen. I just think that we have the most vested, passionate interest in our children.
Yeah, I honestly don't know how this works, but my thought is you'd be electing members to the Collingswood Oakland Regional School District, which means that the voters in Collingswood and Oakland will vote on those members. My impression from that is Oakland ain't never gonna have anybody elected, because Collingswood's got four or five times the number of votes that we have. So we might be eliminating our representation entirely if we do that. But again, I don't know that.
It's all great, like, I would like to know the answer to that, like, you know?
It might be in this article.
Yeah, and the other thought, so Teresa's, read the article. And again, I've got lots of questions, because like, both of you have debt, so how does that work? You know, so I've got, so, so yeah, read the, read the resource, and I can always reach out to school boards if you guys want me to do that on your behalf.
To Beth Ann's point, that's the first thing I thought of, was the debt and the money. And the second thing is the staffing and how that would impact the teachers in this school district, because they would no longer be in Oakland Public School.
It would rise to the Collingswood guide.
And their tenure and all that, that is the first thing that popped in my brain, is how is that gonna work for the teachers, and is it gonna hurt them?
I think it benefits, because the guides are very similar, but usually when you have a high school, the guides tend to be a little richer at the end, and they, yes, but we've been working to kind of get the guides, not, they're similar, they're not the same, but they're similar. But usually what, they would roll to the Colling, they would go to the Collingswood guide, probably. Like, that's, when the middle school went to Collingswood, that's, the middle school teachers from Oakland went to Collingswood, and that's what it is. They became Collingswood employees on the Collingswood guide.
Yeah, of course.
But yeah, there's a lot of good questions, so let me know if you want me to reach out to anybody.
I just wanna also say this was completely organic. I was not, I was not discussed with this by anyone. I just, it was just in my head, and I'm not pro nor con of it. I just think it's a conversation, when I, when I read the article about, you know, New Jersey funding, warning us to regionalize, I, see, I can't even say the word right. I wanted to look it up and, you know, understand a little bit more about it and just open the conversation, so.
Most of us in this vicinity area, you know, we are struggling with the same things. If you poke around or come to a meeting of the New Jersey Fair Funding Collective, we all have the same issue. So I don't think it's a far-gone conclusion to say, "Let's not look at other options." I think that's doing your due diligence as a board member. I'll just say that Dr. McDowell put a link in the administrative content to the, on Committee of the Whole to that. And also, take note, these are districts, I think, in, if it exists, central Jersey. The size and scale are significantly different, even though, you know, we say Collingswood is big, but we're talking like thousand kids in high schools, so.
Just make this a little more partisan. If we're gonna consider regionalization, maybe we consider someone other than Collingswood to regionalize with. So that'll throw another monkey wrench in your thinking.
The guts on this side of the table, I just can't.
All right. Anything else for Committee of the Whole?
Meeting adjourned.
All right, let's have a motion to close Committee of the Whole. So moved.
You're welcome.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Moving on to Section Five, there's future dates and miscellaneous information. You can take a look at your board agendas for all the upcoming dates. And on to Routine Board Business. So do we have a motion to approve minutes from the previous meeting, February 18th?
So moved.
And the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Well, next we have our first Public Comment section. Everyone's reminded to please stand, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. The purpose for this Public Comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional more general comments may be made at the second Public Comment section later on in the meeting. Public's reminded that all attempts to resolve concerns and complaints should go through the appropriate staff members and administrators first. Any public comment?
May have to turn thingy on, I may turn it off. Or you can just yell. It's supposed to help buffer the... No, it is. Number thirteen, under Finance.
Brett Love, Twenty Harding Avenue. I'm here as a representative of the Oakland Little League. I'm the president, and knowing the agenda, you'll be considering our proposal. And I just wanted to say thank you for your consideration. We really appreciate it. And if you have any questions, I can answer them to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Brett, don't forget, next fall, I wanna say, start looking out for the DCA grants. The Department of Community Affairs, I fear he was here last time, I gave her the information. But every fall, they open up some grants for this specific purpose, so just be on the lookout for it. Yeah, okay. Good. But you can apply for one. You just need a letter from the mayor and a letter from the board, and we will support you in your endeavor, but...
Two?
Yeah, usually you need a letter from the mayor. We just put in for one in Collingswood, and we need a letter from both. So, yeah, just be on the lookout for it.
Because it's my understanding, well, if someone did look into it, they found out that, because we need their approval, that if we get it, they can't, so...
So, they already got it, but they got it for, but I'm saying, put it in for next year for the, you know what I mean? Beat them.
They want it. They're using it every year.
Every year.
That's my, that's my understanding.
Well, I would call the DCA and see if they use all the money every year, and see if Oakland get two, because I'm just that kind of person.
I do have one quick question regarding the field. How is it currently being utilized, or is it not being utilized, the field that you're looking to make the improvements to?
That field is a, it's ninety-foot base paths. So it's basically for older kids, which, little league, we can play up to sixteen years old, so juniors and senior leagues could use that field. Right now, though, we don't have any teams that age. We haven't for a little bit. And we have, you know, they play maybe eight times a year, they practice someplace else, it really has not been utilized. And as far as, you know, of course, this school, they don't have no one of that age to play. And I could not speak to when the last time a Collingswood team of that age, middle school or high school came over and played. So right now, like our league, we've been using it kind of as just a place to go to practice, but it's not good for us, and it's not maintained. Like, we, we maintain the fields out there, so the second week, we begin, March 1st, we go out there, we have machines, and we care for it. When we, every year, we get them dressed, so Magnolia, I shouldn't say the company, I don't remember exactly who, but they come out and they do it, and we treat it with special things that help absorption and help the dirt. And if you notice, you look at the softball field right now, we've been really concentrating on that a lot. And if you notice, that's not overgrown, where the other ones are. So if you look at the juniors' field, it's, I hate to say, it's almost like, if you look at it, it's almost abandoned.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was asking.
Yeah. So, right now, I think with our proposal, I think I mentioned in there, it could be used by either baseball or softball, and any age.
Yeah, no, that sounds good.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Any other public comments? All right, we will close the Public Comment section, on to the Superintendent's Report.
Section Eight, 8.01 is the Enrollment Report, February 2024 to 66, February 2025 to 70. 8.02, 03, 04, and 05 are the School Safety, Suspension, Anti-Bullying, and Child Study Team Quarterly Report, and each of those are also attached, with there being no bullying reports for the month of March.
And moving on to the Business Administrator, Board Secretary's Report.
9.01 is a listing of your February 2025 budget transfers. 9.02 is your Board Secretary and Treasurer's reports, your financial reports. 9.03 is the purchase orders issued thus far for the month of March. I know it's early this year because of budget. 9.04 is a listing of the warrants to be paid tomorrow morning, and that's it.
All right. Moving on to Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee. I will kick that off. Finance Facilities and Shared Services Committee is looking for approval of the following items. 10.01 is approval for budget transfers, 10.02, 10.03, approval of certifications of no over expenditures, 10.04 is approval of Secretary Treasurer reports, and 10.05 and 10.06 are approval of the purchase orders and warrants, new business. 10.07 and 10.08, we have our budget submissions, first one being for our elementary budget, second one being for our pre-K budget, which would be submitted to the Office of Early Childhood. 10.09 is a motion to approve the Transportation Addendum for a Tuition Contract with West Stepford. 10.10 is a motion to approve the 25-26 Preschool Secretarial Support Services Agreement between Collingswood and Oakland. 10.11 is a motion to approve the continuation of services to be provided by Camden County Ed Services Commission for the 25-26 school year. 10.12 is a motion to approve the request for, on proposals for outside services, which includes the board solicitor, auditor, architect, and also OT, PT, and behavioral services. 10.13 is a motion to approve the proposal from Oakland Little League to refurbish a large baseball field into a multi-use space. And 10.14 is a motion to approve use facilities request from Oakland Soccer Club. Need a motion to approve those items. So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah, two things. Number one, the RFPs, we talked about this in committee, specifically sending, rather than just waiting for somebody to respond, for the solicitor, where we've had a little discussion lately on them, to specifically send that to other qualified solicitors in addition to our current one. And on the baseball field, just one question on the, the storage facility, when to put behind the dugout. Is that going to be the same size as the dugout?
Yeah.
So for that, what we plan to do is along the third base dugout, we basically would like to just basically extend it. So chain link fence, to keep the same aesthetic that's going on, we would probably have to raise the fence up higher for security purposes. And then we'll just need a gate big enough, because part of this plan, we would have to acquire a fiberglass mound that we need to safely store. So it wouldn't be quite behind it. So if you just picture the dugout just being a little bit longer, how exactly longer? Truthfully, it depends on the size of the mound we need to get. Ballpark, 20 feet?
300 feet.
Yeah, that's going to go all the way out.
Okay. Yeah, no, that's fine.
So that, so it would still be a chain link fence, so it kind of like keeps the same aesthetic. And as far as any of our storage in there, we would just need, right now in the dugout, there's a, there's a box. And we would need something like that, just enough to put in, like the liner and stuff we use for the field, so we can keep it nice and dry. And eventually, we would like to put covers over the dugouts to help shield the children from the sun. And that cover too, we would put over that extension to keep everything nice and dry in the
And more secure.
Yes. So no one can, yeah, that's why we went the fence higher, so it gets right up to that roof. So, because one problem we do have in many parts is they climb the fence anyway. But we lock, so that would be, there's not enough space to squeeze through. So it would be chain link fence locked up, secured.
Okay. Yeah, just, just one thing too. I'm going to vote for this. So don't get excited by what I say. But the, when that field was first installed,
Yes.
that was a skin infield.
Okay.
And there were myriad complaints from the neighbors on the next street over. Land, yeah, Landis, thank you. So just be prepared that if that happens, you're going to have to somehow placate them.
Yeah.
Give them free tickets to the Little League games.
Right now, that's not a problem. Right now, we have a skin field on the other side of field, and that field's even closer. And, I mean, I can't speak to any complaints you might get, because it's your fields. But I've been a member of the board for the Little League since 2017, and I've personally heard nothing about that field. So I'm hoping the case is that maybe, like, because we do maintain those fields when we're there quite a bit, stir the dirt up, and that helps that top layer not just be like dust. So a lot of wind blowing and a lot of tough retreat, I think, helps a lot. So I'm hoping that will quell a lot of the old problems used to happen.
Yeah. One of the problems is the wind blows this way. So the softball field, you're not going to have any problem with down there, because the dust isn't going to blow over there worst cases. So just be aware of that. Just be prepared. Forearmed is forearmed, right?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Our local.
Mr. DeMarco.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Stotts.
Yes.
Mr. Tabey.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to item 11, curriculum and personnel committee. Mr. Schaefer.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Just a few items for approval tonight. Item 11.01, we're looking to approve a field trip end of May to the Please Touch Museum. Item 11.02, looking to approve the 2025-2026 calendar that Rich had alluded to earlier tonight in discussion. And item 11.03, looking for approval for the hiring of Hillary Roof as a nurse. So we are seeking approval on items 11.01 through 11.03.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Any comments or questions?
Yes. I'm sorry, I get paid by the comments, so I try to make as many as I can. I'm very unhappy with the school calendar. It's, I guess it's the way of life anymore, but the minimum becomes the maximum. State of New Jersey says that we have to go to school 180 days a year. So we're saying right away, oh, okay, we're going to go 180 days. Why, why do we have, why can't we put something in there? What is the magic in not having more days? I'm also unhappy with the professional development days. We, a few years ago, that was out of control, and we made a concerted effort to bring that down. Now it's going the other way. There were six in the current year, there's six and a half next year. So it's not a big change, but it's going the wrong way. And I'd like to see fewer professional development days. I'd like to see maybe another week at the end of the year. Can't interfere with anybody's vacation at this point in time, because nobody has made vacation plans, I'm sure, for 2026. So I'd like the minimum to not be the maximum. I think we can go to 186 days with the calendar, with the Oak. I'm sorry?
Teacher contract.
I'm sorry, say that again?
She's talking about the teacher contract. There's a certain number of days you can't go above it, and the teacher.
We can't go above what for professional development?
Hello, Mr. Stotts and everyone. I figured I'd just come up. I was the head of the calendar committee, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone has. But to those points, is it okay that I just came up and started talking? Okay, great. Here I am. Yes, there are 100, and I will happily go back and have a seat. So we're kind of bookended pretty tightly by September 1st, being the first day that staff can report. And there's 187-day maximum contractual stipulation for staff. And so when you really start to map it out and account for the holidays that we traditionally have taken over the past, we went back a couple of years and looked at the last few calendars, when you plug those dates in and account for a couple other things along the way, like NJEA convention, et cetera, we are really kind of tightly constricted about how we can be any more creative than what we see here. Of course, open to ideas if there's something that we have yet to consider. The way that there's really, as we see it on the, on the proposal that you see for approval and vote tonight, the only day that is sort of in play would be Friday, January 2nd, is currently listed as a day off for students and staff. The committee, the calendar committee felt strongly that it, that we would like to keep that as a closed day, to have one continuous holiday from the 24th of December through to the 4th of January. But just, just to speak, that is really the only day that's in play right now, that we would be able to swap out for an additional day. Other than that, we are pretty locked, like, pretty like handcuffed to the constraints with that September 1st date. Unless, like someone mentioned earlier, we wanted to continue into the week of June 22nd, 2026. And so we were attempting to avoid going that late into the end of June. And so that's how we arrived at this draft, sir.
Okay. And looking at the last two years, I think you're right, Jewish holidays are one that come to mind. We take both Jewish holidays now, both Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah.
Yes.
Prior to, maybe two years ago, three years ago, that was not the case.
Yes, I believe that's right.
It was one or the other.
Yes.
They could do one. So we've now expanded that.
Right.
And we just seem to be finding ways that we don't have to educate the kids. And I'm concerned about that. And I'm, I'm not following it. I'm sorry. I'm probably a little bit tense. Not probably, I am. But this calendar says total student days 180, total staff days 184.
Yes.
Now, you said we could go to 187 staff days.
Yes.
Now.
That would take us into the week of, we could add, yes, that would take us to the
Exactly. Well, what I'm thinking, you could eliminate one of the, one of the Jewish holidays. You could reduce the number of professional development days to maybe four, instead of six and a half. And if, if that didn't do it, yes, you could actually go into that, that last week in June.
Mr. Stotts, let me, let me, let me, I think that it's really important, like, separate and apart from that, Meredith, could you talk through the individuals on the committee?
Sure.
That helped to actually be able to draft it. And so the feedback, I think, is important, but in terms of our ethical responsibility from a governor's perspective, we want to be very mindful that we're not circumventing or discounting the work of the actual committee, which was combined with Collingswood and Oakland staff and administration to co-develop this calendar, based on the needs of staff, the needs of students, the contractual constraints, and then the limitations of the actual days within the month for the upcoming school year.
So, yeah, Mrs. Funky, this next, this next calendar. Yeah. So, thank you, Dr. McDowell. Yes, we had a, I think, a really productive process this year. Back at the fall Oakland Board Retreat, you requested that we had a unified Collins and Oakland school calendar for '25 and '26. And so hearing that from you all, we, we set out to form a, a collective committee across both districts with kind of a diverse array of representation from different stakeholder groups across both Collins and Oakland, teacher, OEA, leadership, buildings and grounds, elementary, secondary, middle school. And so from, from Oakland, excuse me, we had Jim Bolden and Todd Weisenstein. We had Robin Hogan, Mike Sinessi, Meredith Wells, Seidel, Kim Hallenbeck, Jim Floyd, Dave Oliveri, and myself formed the committee. We met on a couple of different occasions to, to draft the proposal. We then presented to both Oakland and Collingswood's February curriculum instruction committees, heard some feedback, took it back and met again, made some final tweaks, and then presenting this version at committees again last week, and then for, for vote tonight. And I'd say the committee, we debriefed a little bit after, at the end of our last meeting, and the committee felt like it was an effective and efficient process. And we, we hope to do something similar going forward next year. The only other thing I'll, I'll add, while I have the mic, as they say, yes, there are six and a half staff professional development days on the calendar here. And just on that note, we tried to be very strategic about when those days occurred. As you've heard me and Principal Bolden share previously, we have now in place some very consistent testing windows that occur throughout the course of the year strategically, fall, winter, spring. That's for our DIBELS and MAP testing, along with other interim things that happen at the building and classroom level. And so you'll see staff professional development days strategically allocated or aligned right after the end of those testing windows. So for example, in September, we'll test the weeks of the 15th through the 30th to get a baseline set of data on student performance after summer and all the, shake the cobwebs off from summer vacation and come back to school. And so then you'll see on that Friday, the 3rd, is a staff professional development day. It was really important that we do that, because I've worked in districts where you take all the time to do the testing and to assess the kids and collect the data. If you don't strategically, if you don't strategically align a pause day there for teachers to analyze, plan, and respond, you just end up being on this hamster wheel of like, you roll into the next weekend to the week after that. And so it was very important to us to strategically place those staff PD days aligned to key testing windows that occur throughout the course of the year. And then the other thing I will add, that I think has been pretty warmly received from, from everyone who has seen a draft of this, the first week of May is pretty traditionally Teacher Appreciation Week across the country. And it was our hope to, to give teachers a thank you on the Friday of that Teacher Appreciation Week by scheduling a half day, not a professional development day or anything, just a half day to say thank you and you may head out early. That first week of May is often traditionally the start of spring state testing on JSLA, College Board, at the high school level. And so we realized we wouldn't be able to effectively do that on Friday, May 8th. And so instead, we slid that Friday down to the 22nd, which is the Friday before Memorial Day. So it's just a delayed Thank You for a Teacher Appreciation Week, and we didn't think anyone would mind getting out a little bit early on the Friday before Memorial Day weekend. So we think it's a win-win, and hopefully something we can carry forward into future, into future calendars. Again, intended as a thank you to teachers. That is all from me, but I'll take any further questions or feedback.
You know what I'm going to ask?
Yes, I do. I think.
So about the ICAL?
Yes.
Or, yes, so, so are we going to have a digital copy that can go out?
Yes. I already talked to our tech team, because you said, you said, you said things to me that I didn't understand, but I wrote down the words you said, and then asked people who could translate for me. So.
Translate it for us.
Yes.
So ultimately, once this is approved and it goes to final, Meredith or somebody else will be able to submit this out to, to all the students, all the, the parents, anybody that wants it, as a file. And then you just click on it. If you're using Google Calendar, Apple Calendar, whatever, it'll, you can automatically add it, and it'll populate all the days. Yeah, and it'll already, it'll be set and ready to go, so you don't have to sit there and make your own calendar.
Thank you.
Or you could take this one and take your bulletin board and put it thin on top of it.
Both options are equally useful, yes.
Okay, I'm going to argue then about the, I still don't like the 180 days.
Thank you.
I, I think that's a problem. I think we're doing a disservice to the kids. We, we're so concerned about how we can do all this for them. There's a way we can do more for them, not have the minimum as the maximum. So if you had to go into that last, that next week in June, so be it. I personally, I see no problem with that. And I will vote against this for, for that reason. I don't think it's enough time.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right. Thank you kindly.
All right. Our vote?
Mr. DeMarco.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Stotts.
No. I'm, I'm sorry. No on item 10.02.
11.02.
11.02, I'm sorry.
I got you. Mr. Tabey.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Moving on to item 12, School Community Relations and Policy Committee. Mrs. Marmian.
Item 12.01 is the Collins Wood Board of Education report from Mr. McMillan.
All right, buckle up. All right. So I will say, it's a whole nother world over there in comparison, after five years of being on the board over here and then going over there. But the, I think everyone's kind of knows what the situation is with the fair funding. So I kind of wrote up a little bit. There are websites. If you go to colls k12.org, the website, right on the front page, there's a lot of information, including the Bridge the Gap mailer that was created by a couple in Collingswood, with a lot of pictures and graphs and data and, and things that you can do to help, you know. So ultimately, $28 million is what Trenton and the local fair share says that Collinswood is required to have. And they are short by tax levy by 8.7 million, which is a very large number. And to be able to hit the same level that they're at right now, which means pretty much status quo, same services, same everything, and a little raise, a little bump in pay for the, for the teachers' contracts, they have to raise $3.6 million. But that just doesn't come out of nowhere. So it was going to go down to major cuts, major services cuts, all kinds of things that I'm alluded to, but I don't think I can speak directly about. So they decided maybe we'd go to the borough. So, they decided maybe we'd go to the borough and ask the borough, and that was on February 10th. We all voted to that the, the school board could go to the borough of Collingswood and ask for some type of, you know, assistance. So, that bounced around back and forth for a month until yesterday afternoon at like, what, 5:30, and they finally agreed. It seemed like they agreed on Friday, and then something happened, and like, the mayor said, from what I, from my understanding, there was, there was, there was the statement, he agreed upon it, and then it changed, he changed his mind. But either way, Beth Ann, Dr. McDowell, Roger Chu, the mayor, everyone worked all over the weekend, because I kept getting all the text messages and seeing everything happening. But they have, they've came up with a plan also on the Collingswood website. So, there are six bullets on here, I encourage all of you to go and read over it because it does directly impact our kids as they leave 5th grade and go over to Collingswood, if that's what they're doing. But there's about $750,000 in pilot programs, which I, I don't, if you want to know more about that, maybe Beth Ann or Dr. McDowell can talk about it, but there's $750,000 in pilot programs that they can take, and then ultimately, the borough said anything else will make up by means of taking a loan or a bond. With that comes the caveat of the board, or the borough wants to look at all the books for the school board, which is, you know, they hired consultants, I'm sure you've heard about this, so, they basically just want their fingers in the books to be able to do whatever they do as a municipality, but with that, they will provide us the funding. On top of that, looking in September, they're looking for another referendum to be able to raise taxes. So, this is, I don't like the word bailout, but it was, it was mentioned yesterday, but this is, this is, we're in big trouble, and they came in and fixed the problem right now, it's not fixed for the future. So, the referendum has to come through, which is gonna be raising taxes, it's gonna be looking at increasing the 2% cap, and a number of other things. So, someone also said last night, which, you know, I, one of the comments from the public struck me was the Plan B, in case the referendum doesn't pass, what's the backup of, what's the, what's the backup plan? So, currently, like I said, it's gonna be status quo for the school district, there is gonna be the same contracts that were pushed out last year, this is gonna go through, the CEA is not happy about it, but that's, that's where it stands right now. And then, one thing on this that I don't, you know, I spoke with Roger Chu about it, I don't really completely understand, but there's a $15 million recreational facility for Knights Park, so this, the borough is borrowing $15 million to better Knights Park, I don't know what.
Yeah, and the little school.
And the fields, yeah, okay. Okay, that's what I wasn't clear on. But ultimately, what the mayor's gonna do is he's gonna get a, he's gonna get the loan for the schools, and then he's gonna get that on a interest-only payment until some of the other loans that the borough has retires, and then he's gonna basically slot those, that loan into those. I think, I think that's almost about it, I don't know if, I'm sure I missed a lot of details, but.
So, I can, I just wanna make sure I'm just providing, filling in some of the gaps that Jimmy articulated, and so, in terms of the, I, we reject the phrase bailout, and so, when we look at the state funding formula, what we've talked about is what's gotten lost, Beth Ann's word, "lost in the sauce," is the state of New Jersey has an expectation through local fair share that the borough, the town borough of Collingswood provides roughly $28 million in local fair share. The borough doesn't have $28 million in local fair share. What the borough will be legally obligated to pay is 19 million, which generates a structural gap of about $8.69 million. And so, over the last several years in Collingswood, we have had to make reductions because the state expects them to pay A, we receive B, and so, we have already reduced between $4 and $5 million over the last several years based on this structural gap, and what we were facing this year was a $3.6 million additional reduction, which would have directly translated into the closure of schools, significant reductions in staffing, much higher number of layoffs than what we currently experienced this past year, in addition to the reduction of extracurricular activities, and so on, and so on, and so on. And so, the appeal for partnership with the borough is that the state expects A, we know that you don't have it, we would appreciate coming together and collaboratively thinking through this math problem. And so, it did take some time because the borough saw an opportunity for us to be able to partner, we saw an opportunity for us to partner, and so, using their municipal flexibility and authority, there were a few things that they were able to agree to in the beginning, which was looking at surplus, looking at pilots, and so, those were some known quantities. What took some time was to identify how we actually closed the full hole, and so, the only way that they were actually able to close the full hole is through a developmental shared service agreement. And so, coincidentally, they have a recreation plan that was introduced in the borough several years ago, they didn't have the mechanism, and that recreation plan is dependent on using school district property. And so, this development, a redevelopment shared service agreement then allows them to transfer the remaining funds to the school district in, in exchange for the shared service agreement and the construction of the property. And so, they're looking at district property as the mechanism needed for them to be able to bond out the funds and then make the direct payment to the district in order to be able to close the gap in the short term. And so, the, also, the long-term commitment, keeping that the current local fair share is roughly 28 million, it will continue to go up, and the borough will continue not to have the 28, 30, 31 million dollars. And so, we know that moving forward, we need to continue thinking creatively about how do we close the gap using whatever flexibility that we have at the least disruptive and burdensome option to taxpayers, and that requires us being in tandem and in active partnership along the way, or the gap will continue to grow. And so, the commitment from both entities is to collectively tackle this structural problem together for all students. And so, the partnership, definitely, we're appreciative of the partnership, but it's, we're really tied together, and so, it creates a new level of symbiosis that has not existed in about 20 years, and so, right now, we're just working through the details.
I have a couple of questions. The referendum is a school district referendum, right, that's happening in September, do you know details of it, because it seems that some things, so, the one that failed in 2018, 19, whatever that was, that was Athletic Fields, right, Focus, the last one, would the, would the next one involve closing any schools?
This would just be, you've heard me talk about the Robbinsville thing?
Yeah.
It would be doing the Robbinsville, so, because we found out after this budget cycle that Robbinsville wasn't affected or penalized by the state, and those of you who don't remember the conversation we had, Robbinsville last year, because they were in the same situation, went out for referendum in March, but not for capital, before a permanent increase in their tax levy to close their gap, and there was some controversy in Trenton because the law that they used is what we use when we go for capital referendums, but the law doesn't actually say the word "capital" in it, so their attorney kind of pressed it, and it passed, so they were able to close their structural gap in Robbinsville, and that's what we're looking to do in September. So, this, what the mayor and the borough councils, what they agreed to last night was like a one-time, right, we're gonna help you in '25, '26, we're gonna go to referendum in September to close that gap permanently going into '26, '27. That's, that's the plan.
In answer to your question, Therese, there's another stage that has to happen before then, and so, a joint advisory committee of us looking at, there's new legislation that came out last year that allows a degree of flexibility on behalf of schools through municipal credit guarantee, and so, using the credit standing of the municipal authority, there's abilities for more creative ways to secure additional funding. And so, the joint committee is going to look at the goals and the objectives from the original referendum from in Sept, from back in September, with one very big difference, athletics won't be connected to that, and so, we'll be looking specifically at academics and also public, public good through the lens of what are all of the options that we can explore to lower that collective ask in September, using the flexibility of the new legislation, using the borough's authority. And so, that joint committee will be borough folks, school district folks, community members, all looking at how do we leverage the community-wide resources in order to reduce the overall ask that will become, forthcoming in September.
Yeah, last question, is anyone looking at lessons learned from the last referendum when it comes to communication and community relations? That was brought up last night, for sure.
I'm sorry. I'm doing talent show.
It, it is, but I think it's also important to, to understand that school districts are restricted due to campaign finance laws within the referendum phase. The actual campaign will only be 60 days, it won't be six months like it was last time, and we'll be working in partnership to communicate with the borough, and so, we are hopeful that the collaboration will continue to bear fruit.
Another, another thing, I was just, so, this isn't just Collingswood, right, so, don't, I mean, I wanna make sure everybody understands that it's, there's many other townships around us that are in the same problem, and last night, it was kind of mentioned that, I mean, you brought up Robbinsville, I was gonna give you guys all the credit for coming up with this, but, but yeah, I mean, we're, it's kind of a groundbreaking solution that you guys came up with, and I think, you know, someone mentioned that we should kind of pave the way for some of the other townships around us to be able to do the same, so.
Okay, the, the referendum in September is not for the '25, '26 school year, it's for '26, '27?
Yes.
Okay, and the borough's committed to the '25, '26 school year, great. Oh, has nothing to do with this, but this is just an example, you're talking about the smart lawyer at Robbinsville, goes back to my question about the non-resident student for teachers, that a smart lawyer will find a way around it, maybe.
I mean, I guess the only other thing that I've witnessed over the, you know, two months that I've been there is, you know, the teacher contracts with the CEA, they keep coming out, and from, from what I can tell, at the low level of my understanding of the budget, is you can't get blood from a stone, and we're trying, and there's, it's not a, it's not a, the administration doesn't want to pay the teachers. Like, we all agree that the teachers deserve well more than they already have, and that we're, you know, we're doing our best to come up with that money. I was speaking with Roger earlier, asking what the difference was between the 8.7 and the 3.6, and it was that 3 million for fair funding, right? So, if we had that extra 5 million, then the teachers would all have raises, everyone would have, you know, the services would be much better, but the money's not there, so, that's, that's really all, so, it was a matter of us trying.
I did have a question about that, if that's appropriate here. For number six, it says the goal is to ensure that the agreed-upon costs to settle these contracts are included in the operating referendum. Is that the, what the teachers are asking for?
No, it's the current, if I'm, if I'm right.
It's the current?
It's, it's, it's what's in my budget. Okay, and that's why we're not settled.
So, it includes a raise, but it doesn't include the full ask, my understanding.
I hate to say this, but just out of curiosity, the amount that you have anticipated for the raise that you've put into this budget, if that doesn't work out, how do you cover any gap in that?
Cuts.
Okay.
I mean, that's the easiest answer, but that's what it comes down to, I mean, like, there's, there's, can't get blood from a stone, you know, and, you know, we put a good faith effort into our proposal, I budgeted what I was instructed to budget by the board, and we're crossing our fingers, but what, this can't, this funds what we felt was reasonable.
Okay, just one note, too, pat on the back for Roger. Yesterday, I made, I was late, obviously, going into the meeting, but the part I heard, Roger actually answered questions that were asked of him, which makes him go away at that point, that's a tremendous improvement over his predecessor who just gave a blank stare. This, he's actually trying to ameliate some of the problems.
All right, thank you. Item 12.02 is the PTA liaison report, Mrs. Rotondo.
Yes, thanks, team. So, on March 4th, the PTA met less recently, at which time, they reflected on past events, which included the Family Fun Night, which was a Lego theme, the pretzel sale, and the PTA family reading experience, they were all very big success. In terms of current state, I think the biggest PTA thing going on right now is the talent show, our talent show committee, I think, lives here, they're here, like, Therese. Now, they're, they're camped out in our cafeteria just watching our, our children rehearse and get prepared for the show, they're doing a ton of other work in the background, trying to get music together, it looks, it really is like a village effort, speaking of which, library helpers are needed, I think this, that was as of then, and I don't think that there's been a tidal wave of volunteers since then, so, so, any of you out there, please volunteer to be a library helper. We're nearing the end of the reading, the Read-a-thon, I think that ends on 3/14, where there's a log of all the minutes the children are reading. Later in the month, there is a Family Fun Night planned, I think it's in partnership with OMACAC, and then there's a bunch of other stuff that would be redundant for me to read now, because I'm just gonna read it in April, but those include things like the Teacher Appreciation Week plans, Spring Fling, Muffins with Mom, Philly Stuff, and things of that nature, so, more to come, tune in to me in April, and you'll hear about those then. Thanks.
When's the next meeting, is April?
Is it April 1st?
I don't know.
I do, I actually, yes, it is.
Thank you.
I texted the president.
Thank you.
To confirm the date.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lila.
Thank you, Lila. Item 12.03, OMACAC report, Mr. Taby.
Yeah, just the upcoming family night collaboration with the PTA, other than that, no updates this month. Yeah.
Item 12.04 is the Oakland Education Foundation, Mr. Schaefer.
No new updates, it's the last time I have been in touch with the OEF president, we're just trying to line up our schedules, it's softball season for Coach Dybbs, a little tough right now, but we have been in contact, and we're gonna hope to meet soon and go from there, because, you know, we have a great resource there with OEF, and, you know, looking to utilize it as much as we can, so, no new news, but we are in the works of trying to align our schedules and get together, so.
Yes, because Mrs. Bolden has a list of things that I removed from her budget, so that maybe you guys can help with a couple of those things.
Yep, and I'm gonna bring that up when we can meet and talk, so, absolutely.
Item 12.05, the first up for approval, our policies for our first reading, 5111 is the one that we discussed in committee of the whole, eligibility of resident, non-resident students, 5710 is student grievance, 8500 is food services. How, item 12.06, our policy's up for a second reading, that's 5516, the use of electronic communication devices, and 5701, the academic integrity policy. Item 12.07, our regulations up for a one- Item 12.07 are regulations up for a one-time reading. The 5533, student smoking. 7441, electronic surveillance in school buildings and on school grounds. And 9320, cooperation with law enforcement agencies. Item 12.08 is the HIB report from February. So we are seeking approval for items 12.05 through 12.08.
Do we have motion? So moved. And the second?
Second.
Any comment or comments or questions? All right, our vote call.
Mr. DeMarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
What are you giggling about over there? Mrs. McMillan? Mrs. McMillan? Mr. McMillan? He's missing. Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to item 13, miscellaneous. We are looking for approval of the Uniform State Memorandum of Agreement between our school and law enforcement officials. Do we have a motion?
Somebody?
Second. Motion and second, and any comments or questions? Our vote.
Mr. DeMarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Item passes. Moving on to our second public comment section for the night. All participants are reminded to please stand, state your name and address, keep your comments to five minutes or less. This public comment section is for any comments. Publics reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should go through the appropriate staff members and administrators first. Any public comment?
Yeah.
All right, no public comments. Moving on to item 15, adjournment. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Move then, second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.